I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for This morning Renee will not be joining us, she's at the IASOT conference as well as auditor Laura, so I'll go ahead and ask for approval of today's agenda.
I'll move to approve today's agenda with the removal of the claims for payment, we don't have any.
Correct, and the conservation board is still discussing the resolution with proposal to relinquish property up at the Frederick property, so that's been tabled as well, so you can strike that from today's.
So that's the first resolution relinquishing by, correct?
Correct. I'll second that, I'll in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This point, I'll open the public comment, this is the time for the public to address the board on an issue not on the agenda. Come on up to the podium.
You would really have to use the...
Yep, because we had requests that people couldn't hear and see who was speaking.
I like to stay hidden when I speak.
Well, I understand that, but come on down Pauline.
Okay, I guess I have a question to ask. I understood that there was a million dollars given to the dog, I don't know what their name is, to the dog factory, is that what you call it? It's by the corn...
NRPT?
NRP?
NRP.
Okay.
Protein plant?
Yeah, something like that, I know they make dog food or whatever. So I was wondering where that million dollars came from, if that was from the board of supervisors or if that was an economic, if that came out of the economic development money.
Okay, I'd have to double check on what you're asking.
What was...
A million dollars given or a million dollars that was TIFT?
It was a million dollars given to the dog factory, and this has come from a very reliable source, very, very reliable.
I'll have to look into it, I don't know the million dollars.
We can have Ronnie Mullins, he's the operations manager at NRP, come down next week and we can also talk with the auditor and see what the economic development or TIF agreements were for that project.
And then if any new jobs were created from that million dollars.
Okay.
I mean, this is a million dollars, I can't believe that no one knows that if that this money was given and you don't recall what it is.
If you're talking about the TIF money, which is tax increment financing, I know what you're talking about, I don't know the exact dollar amount at this time, but...
It was a million dollars.
But that's not giving a million dollars, that's a whole new subject.
So what do you...
But I would have to pull the paperwork out, I don't have it in front of me, obviously.
So what's this that you're talking about then?
TIFT, money that was TIFT.
What's TIF?
Tax increment financing.
So what does that do then?
It allows businesses all around the state that could be in different areas could be used to build, you're still taxing on the value of the ground itself before an industry was built. You can bring a building in, we will cut the taxes back for so long, tax increment financing, whatever increments were decided on whichever choice for a period of time and then it all gets released back, the windmills are in the same program.
No, that's not what this person said at all.
Then I don't know what you're talking about.
It's a million dollars.
I have to look at it to know what you're talking about, I can tell you what I know.
Okay, this is economic development, I can tell you for certain it did not come out of economic development. We had a million dollars.
Love it.
That was pretty sure.
Pretty sure or certain?
I'm pretty sure it's tax increment financing.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be more than happy to invite Ronnie Mullins from NRP down to address your concern and find out what the project was, because when I was first elected, we did a TIF project with them to help expand, and there was an agreement filed with the state economic development group that they had to have so many jobs and they have to report that on an annual basis to maintain their TIF agreement.
Okay, and then I have another question.
Okay.
And this goes back to kind of our same old thing. Why, I understand that, and this was new to me, so I went to a meeting last night over Webster City, and I had never been to one of these CCI, and there's 22 counties in this, and I didn't know that Harden County was in it, but I looked at our statement, she showed me our statement, it's a paragraph this big, I read it four times, I couldn't make heads or tails out of what it said or what it meant.
I don't know what she's even talking about.
I don't know what your, what statement.
It's a statement agreeing with the counties. I'm not getting...
Yeah, I'm hoping that's what it is. Where are we at on time? Okay. And Pauline, I'll ask you to present then and go ahead and wrap up.
And it's a petition to the governor and the state of Iowa and the legislatures addressing filing of master matrix, and you guys wrote one.
Yep.
It's this, like I said, it's this little, and I looked through all of the counties here, and there's 22 of them that are in this, and like I said, ours was the smallest and meant absolutely nothing to me. Like I said, I read that thing three, four times and I could not make heads or tails out of it.
Okay.
But my question is then, so since you guys wrote it, you guys would have a chance to stick up and say a little something too when these hog things are brought up, so why do you not say anything?
I believe we do say things, but we're constrained by the Iowa code, so...
I've never heard you guys say anything.
I appreciate your opinion, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for the next public speaker, Pauline.
Okay, but you still didn't answer the question.
I told you...
At the Mites thing, you didn't say a word. You all three sat up here and you didn't say one word.
Right. Okay, thank you, Pauline.
You still didn't answer my question, why?
I did, I said we observe the Iowa code and the administrative rules.
This gives you some guidelines.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, thank you, next public speaker.
We never get questions answered.
Okay, at this time, I am going to move to the next item, Dr. Bryn Johnson's here, she is a dentist, and she has applied for the FINE program.
Were there any other public comments?
Julie, did you want to speak?
Oh, no.
Okay, okay. So I will go ahead and turn the floor over to Dr. Johnson.
You can just... Sure, yep. That's fine, thank you. Thanks for having me today. In the process of moving to Iowa Falls, my fiance just started his job yesterday, so this is a PowerPoint that I actually made to present to the Lions Club yesterday in Iowa Falls, so it's a little bit fluffy because they wanted to get to know me a little bit personally, so we can kind of skip the fluff and just get to the meat and potatoes, but go ahead. This is just about me, I'm originally from northwest Iowa, I grew up in Lorenz, I graduated from Simpson College, like thoughtful there, and then I did graduate in May from the University of Iowa College of Dentistry, I'm getting married in November, and I just wrote in there that I love dogs, so that's my family and that's my fiance and my puppy, so. This talks about my dental background, which kind of ties into the reason that I'm applying to the FINE program. I originally studied education and English my first year of college before I switched into the dental sciences and biology. I job shadowed in a dental office and worked as a dental assistant, but where I really found my passion of dentistry was helping the underserved at the Mission of Mercy. I don't know if you guys have heard about the IMOM, but it's a one-year event that happens every year in Iowa, it moves around the state, this year it's in Sioux City, and just everyone, doesn't matter your social status or what your income is, you're invited to come and have free dental care, and so the picture on the very right is me assisting at my very first IMOM, I've done it seven times, but at that first IMOM, I realized that I needed to do something to help people that really couldn't help themselves, and so that's really sparked my interest in dentistry. So that's how I knew I wanted to be a dentist. So I became a dental assistant, I worked as an assistant on my college breaks, and then I applied at dental school and I got it. I graduated in May, that's a picture with my family and friends, and then actually with Dr. Geimer, if you know Dr. Geimer, he is practicing in Iowa Falls, and that's the practice that I'm purchasing. I was a member of the Dental Fraternity, the Public Health Club, and then in my senior year, I did externships in private practice back in my hometown, which was really cool, and then also in the geriatric and special care unit, which was also very neat, another two populations of underserved people, so that was very challenging and very rewarding. Iowa River Dentistry is the practice, I guess the new practice name, I'm taking over for Dr. Geimer, so I'm buying the practice actually from Applewhite, which is corporate dentistry, he sold his practice to Applewhite in 2011, so I'm buying the practice from Applewhite, but I'm buying the building from Dr. Geimer, and he's gonna work alongside me for a few months doing some specialty stuff and kind of coaching me as I get into being a practice owner and a dentist, so hopefully starting in early September, buying a house, so we're doing a lot at the same time, but that's my business card, so it's kind of exciting. So Delta Dental, the next slide was kind of cool because I was cruising around on their website, on the next slide, it shows me on their website from two years ago, so when I was applying to their program, I was like, hey, that's me, is that a sign? So that's me in my second year of dental school, I didn't even know I was on their website, but kind of funny, but next slide. So the FINE program, that's what I'm applying to, and this is very important to me for a couple reasons, but it means fulfilling Iowa's needs for dentists, it's put on by Delta Dental, it's a loan repayment program, dental school is expensive, just like middle school, school or any other grad program, so I have a lot of loans, it's the price you pay for becoming a specialist in any field, but basically, Delta Dental wants to recruit dentists to stay enroll Iowa, and they say that if you do come and work in private practice, we'll help you pay up to $100,000 in your loans, which is substantial, and in return, I agree to allocate 35% of my services to the underserved, which I was probably gonna do anyway. So that means typically, patients who are on Medicaid, patients who are very young or the elderly, and I have experience in all of those, and I did special training at school for them, so it kind of is a win-win for me, they help me pay back my loans if I help the people that I wanted to help anyway, so it's kind of tailored to me. This is on the FINE website, the shaded counties are called high priority counties, so you'll notice that most of Iowa is a high priority county because most of Iowa is rural, Harden County is a high priority county, most of the counties that aren't are like Johnson County where the University of Iowa is and Polk where Des Moines is, and so they base this based on a number of things, like most of the dentists in Iowa are over age 60, so they're gonna be retiring soon, so they're just trying to recruit young dentists to areas in Iowa that they can get them to stay, so that's what that shows. These are past recipients of the FINE award, so they're scattered all over the state, I think probably the closest one that you guys will know, I think it's, does it say Alden up there?
Ackley.
Ackley, okay, so that's kind of the area I'm still learning this from, but up by me, there's someone in Emmitsburg, that's kind of where I'm from, so someone near my area has received it as well, but they're kind of scattered all over, so they don't just zero in on one spot. The application process, it's pretty large, you get your initial application in, then you do a really big thing that's due in June where you write like eight essays about why you're qualified, why you want to do this, why is it important to you, why does your county need this, why is this important to your county and where you're going, that was the easy part, because it just kind of came from the heart. You get three letters of reference from other dentists that say why you'd be a good candidate for this program, and then the part that's coming up and the part that why I'm here partially today is that you have to raise on your own behalf $5,000 in pledges, and so I have to go out into the community of Iowa Falls and say, I am applying for this program and on my own, I have to raise $5,000 towards my own loan repayment to show you that I'm coming to Iowa Falls and I'm here to stay. And the reason that they do that is because I think in the past, they've had recipients win the award and then they say, thanks for the $100,000, I'm out of here, and then they go to Des Moines. So it's hard to go to people and say, will you please support me, and then get that money from those people and then leave, so that's why they instated the $5,000 pledges. So I sent out letters basically to everyone that was listed on the chamber in Iowa Falls explaining what the FINE program was, why I was applying, I sent them a picture of myself, and then pledge forms, and I had kind of a low response rate, and I think it's mostly because I don't live in Iowa Falls yet, I'm not officially owning my practice until early September, my fiance just started his job, we're not buying our house until September, so I'm not in the community yet, so it's been very difficult for people to basically support me because they don't know me. So I've raised about half of the money on my own, but the deadline is next week, and if you don't raise the $5,000, you're not considered for the award, so it would really stink if I made it all the way here and I was a really strong contender for the award and I didn't make it just because I couldn't get the $5,000. So if you do get the $5,000 and you are selected as a recipient, you call up the people in November and say, guess what, I'm a recipient, it's time to collect the money, and then we send the checks to a third party in Des Moines, they handle all the money, all the money goes directly to the loan repayment, I don't see a dime of it, so I can't go buy a new car or something, it just goes directly to your student debt and it just cuts it down. So that's how the program works, it's kind of confusing, but I'll give you time to ask questions at the end. This is a content of what I sent out, so this is what people received in the mail, the pledge form is on the left, basically, they just write in, this is how much I'd like to support Bryn, they sign it, the letter on the right just explains exactly what the program is, why it's important to the development of Iowa Falls, helping people who can't really help themselves while helping me at the same time, and then I sent a picture because I thought that if they saw my face, at least they'd be more willing to donate than just the letter. I explained how the pledges work, so I don't think we need to get into that again. So I kind of really explained already why this is important to me, the first IMOM really helped me realize that helping people who really were down on their luck or really had a hard time paying for dental care was very important to me, I just had a really emotional experience helping someone who couldn't pay for dental work, and it really sparked my interest in dentistry and helped me work hard to get into dental school. Most of the patients that I interacted with in dental school were low-income patients, and I had some of the best experiences with them, they showed up for me, they were invested in my education and I was invested in their dental care, so it was just a really special experience for me in dental school, I had a really positive experience. I told you guys I had a great time with my geriatrics and special needs patients, again, two other populations of people that don't have a lot of access to care, and so some dentists are really hesitant to care for those two populations because they feel like they don't have a lot of experience with them, I'm comfortable treating them, so. Another thing, if you've read in the news and kept up on it, Medicaid has made some pretty significant changes to their dental requirements or their caps on treatment, what they can give to patients on the Dental Wellness Plan patients, so that puts another barrier on top of the already existing barriers that these patients face, not every dentist accepts Medicaid, and at the University of Iowa, a major, major supporter of Medicaid has closed their doors to accepting new patients, so there's not a lot of places for these patients to go, so it just, it's kind of in my heart to care for these people. Commitments to patient care, just really listening to individuals, using evidence-based and sure to get things done, working together with other health professionals, and then the last one just has always been very important, be treating each patient with dignity and respect regardless of social status, that just kind of ties in the whole reason for doing this program and why it's so important to me. Does anyone have questions about the program, how things work? Yes?
So if you, I mean, Dr. are able to do your, raise your funds for this year, are you able to reapply next year?
If I'm not able to raise the funds this year, I have the option to either not try again or try again.
Yes.
Yes.
I'd be interested in talking to Taylor about, you know, how the underserved do treatment, because I mean, I know people who fit into their between Medicaid and having insurance.
Yep.
I'm really interested in that, and I really appreciate who's doing that.
What was that percent again?
The percent of, or percent that I need to allocate.
No, for what Julie was just talking, that you have to do a certain percent?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five percent.
Thirty-five.
Yep.
Any other questions for the doctor? Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you guys for letting me speak today.
Absolutely. All right, Lance, is this something you'd like to consider today or think about?
We have next week to decide also.
Yes, so the pledges for me have to be submitted by September 1st.
Okay.
So you have about a week and a half.
Okay. This is one I think I would like Renee to be here on as well.
Yep.
Yes, I do believe we could use the economic development and community betterment to help pledge to this. I think it's a great program, and in my opinion, if we pledged the full amount, I think we'll get our money back tenfold, if not more. But I want, I would like Renee to be here as part of this.
Sure.
I'm not saying I'm pledging the full amount, that's just my opinion.
Right, I agree, thank you.
I think it's a great program.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thanks for having me today.
Yep. All right, the next item I have is utility permits and secondary roads report, Taylor, do you have anything? Sure.
I'm not a doctor.
I'm just a dentist, so...
Oh, dentists or doctors, trust me.
Taylor, you're a road doc.
Road doctor, that's not a good word for me either. So our road to Ackley is done, I have two Ackley residents in here just to relax about that, you know?
I don't want to.
Straightway go there every day. And we're currently working on opening one of our closed roads just by Honey Creek Park, so it should also keep some people happy. Other than that, it's been kind of quiet other than the rain we had.
Yep.
It messed up all the roads, but that's life around here, utility permits.
Okay. I have nothing to...
Sweet.
All right, thank you. Next, I have a resolution, proposal to publish notes of intent to relinquish interest in real property.
That was Taylor again, wasn't it?
No.
This one over.
Nope. This is in regards to property in Cleves that were on or about May 23, 1983, May Gruis, gifted by warranty deed to Harden County, property in Cleves, Iowa, to be used as a public park described with the legal description, and so we just need to acknowledge the notice of intent to relinquish the interest in that real property.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution proposal to publish notice of intent to relinquish interest in real property.
I'll second that, any discussion Lance?
Well, if conservation was here, it's a property that's, they've been talking about for some time, and it's a little park that's there, it does cost us money, it's in a drainage district, and one of their stipulations was it had to go back to a property owner first, and they were having a hard time finding a property owner.
Right.
And I believe this is the first step of getting to that point.
Yes, Julie?
So you're going to sell this piece of property that was gifted to...
To conservation.
What?
To conservation.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Nancy?
Hi Nancy.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next I have are a series of 11 abate orders provided.
I'll make a motion to approve the abate orders as presented.
Okay, I'll second that, any further discussion? Yes?
I'm a little not, not clear on this, what does that mean, abate order?
Michelle, do you want to give the...
Yeah, I can explain, these are taxes that are being changed due to certain reasons, and it looks like the assessor changed during the informal hearing, but didn't get it changed in time for the new year, so that we don't have the correct amount of taxes on the buildings, so they're telling us that we need to change the values or whatever that they did change to make that change in the property tax, so that the building is built to the owner correctly.
So that's all?
I noticed most of those were a little bit, little bit lower.
Yeah, I haven't seen them yet.
Do they always go lower or do they sometimes go higher?
No, sometimes go higher, say if the value was missed or whatnot, they could change that value to a higher amount, I haven't seen that happen a lot, usually it's for taking taxes off, so if we were adding value, that would be an add order and not an abate order.
Oh, so the abates mean that we're taking value or dollars from the tax base?
Julie?
So apparently there were several that were overvalued by, by the assessor, overvalued by the assessor, and then the owner steps up and says, you know, I think that's overvalued, and then...
They have to go through a process, they're in process, yeah.
Except, I guess, and so now we're just seeing those changes generally speaking.
It's just because of the timeliness of it?
Right, that they were overvalued, and so people complained. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
And so then once that abate order's approved by the board of supervisors, if it's approved, then it comes to me, and then I have to do all the changes and get the statements out correctly.
Tax...
Yeah, I'm gonna talk about that. I know, I'm gonna talk about that in other business.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, I am going to ask for approval to minutes from the August 15, 2018 meeting.
I will move to approve.
Okay. I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a fireworks permit application from Kevin Dornkamp. The Moose Lodge, which is located in unincorporated Harden County at 11350 US Highway 65, is applying for a fireworks permit for fireworks to be utilized on August 25, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve with the acknowledgement that they will show proof of insurance and will have medical equipment available. A first aid kit. I assume that the Moose Lodge, if this is, this is where they're letting it off, does have liability insurance.
Correct, but we'll verify that.
But to be verified-
Okay.
Upon reapproval.
Okay. I have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, I have a change of status at the Sheriff's Office.
I'll move to approve Daniel Wiggs, part-time deputy. It's a hired position, beginning 8/18 of 2018.
Okay. I'll second that. Any discussion?
It was full-time, now he's part-time.
Yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, I have two changes of status in the Treasurer's Office. The first being Samantha Cook. She has been hired for motor vehicle driver's license clerk in the Treasurer's Office with a start date of August 27, 2018. Michelle, do you want to say anything? Okay.
I'm just happy to have some new employees. We've been shorthanded for quite some time, so-
Excellent.
Hoping that, that we have great people. It seems like it. And I hope they, they like the job and continue to, you know, serve the public so we can serve them properly and time efficiently.
Okay.
I will move to approve the change of status for Samantha Cook. Treasurer, $15 an hour, start date August 27, 2018. After, it's a full-time position. After six months, based on performance hourly wage increase, not to exceed $15.50.
Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, I have is a second change of status in the County Treasurer's Office for Michelle Harkin. Position, motor vehicle driver's license clerk at the rate of $15 an hour, start date of August 28, 2018. And same terms after six months, based on performance and hourly wage increase, not to exceed $15.50 as possible.
I will move to approve.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Michelle?
Yeah, I have some other business.
Yep.
It is August 21, and the Harden County property taxes statements have not been mailed yet. With the conversion of our program software, I, things have been delayed, and I am, my stomach's churning, but the tax statements will get out there. I just know that people are thinking that they've lost them, but they haven't got them yet. So, just want to make the public aware that we're working on them diligently, and I'm trying to get them approved, but I've got a problem again. So, I've got to call into our Tyler supports tech, and I'm waiting for, for that problem to get resolved, so I can get it back to the printer and okayed and final and mailed out.
Okay.
I've been hitting a roadblock every time I turn around, so.
So, are they still gonna be due like on the same dates? Or are they gonna be expanded because-
If they do not get mailed out by the 31st or September 1st, then you'll get another month to pay. And I'm hoping that that is not the case. But, if I have them out by code by the 31st or the 1st of September, then they're still due by the end of September. So, even your statement might say September 1st is your due date, but you always have till Octo, till September 30th to pay. The penalty date is October 1st. So, that's how it's always been. It's just that we've never, ever been this late in getting our statements out.
So, I'm always just getting them in August, and then thinking, "Oh, September 1st, I have to have it paid by."
And like I said, it's not doing my stomach any well, being here at this point in time, not having them approved, but it's just been a, it has been. But we'll get through it, and next year won't be this bad, so.
Thank you, Michelle. Megan?
So, I'm here just to tell you a quick IRM update. As far as our grants go, I received four of the six that I applied for. So, they're gonna be executed, and then whenever I get the money and what else I have for, then I can start ordering the equipment. I am back to a Department of One as of last week. I did, because my season wasn't on, I went back to school, so. I did hire a new person to fill the position that Nate had. They'll start on the 5th of September. So, then I can get back to being out in the field, because everything requires two people. So, I'll be back in the field then. On this Friday, the Harden County High School Construction Club is, or School, whatever, they're, they're coming out to look at the site. They're gonna start building the Seabrook. So, they'll look at it this Friday. And I'm just getting caught up on office work right now. While I'm waiting on the persons to start. Trying to, if there is site distance, I have a laundry list of people that have made complaints, so I'm trying to get out there, and if I can go out without a chainsaw to cut the brush, I will. But with a chainsaw, you have to have two people, so that's kind of a state still at the moment. Unless Taylor can volunteer someone for a day.
Okay. Thank you, Megan.
Wait, what do you, when you started on that construction two weeks ago, you mentioned you went to-
Construction?
Or for this construction program with the high school two weeks, it was two weeks ago or three? I don't remember, when you were here. August 8, I believe. And you mentioned the lumber coming from Home Depot?
Because that's where the teacher told you to get it from.
Could we still look at any local businesses that-
It was, it was ordered like months ago, for a month ago. Yeah, it was ordered a while ago, it just came in yesterday. But he told me to do it, because he, the way he does it is he puts a wish list together, and then he's like sends it in, and then I just have to like, "Hey, we need this order." That was just, that's what he was doing, so.
Okay.
I can, I can tell you that those kids are good. They built our machine shed. They're a little slow, because there are times they can only come out and work one hour.
Right.
They redid my bathroom and kitchen.
So, you know to, they're good.
Great.
Okay. Other business? Okay. Ask for adjournment.
Move for adjournment.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. How are you today, Rob?